I try to make somebody snort coffee through their nose every morning.
Good to have goals.
You ready? Should we get started? Morning, everyone. It's 7:00 AM, February 1st, 2023. We'll call this meeting, we'll call the City Council Committee to hold the order. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Here.
Chels is absent, so Fish. I'm sorry, Hicks. Sorry.
More coffee, please.
Yes, here.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Wommy.
Here.
Over, absent, and free my.
We have a quorum. We're going to skip item one for now, so we're going to move to item two, dealing with community festivals, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, your honor, council members. We're going to move item number one to our February 15th meeting in two weeks. Jess is not feeling well, and we thought it was important that you guys get to meet her and put a face to a name, so we'll see that here in a couple of weeks. So thanks for your understanding there. Community festivals, on an annual basis, the city council by resolution declares what are our community festivals. Essentially, what that means is that the city has the ability to waive costs or waive fees for those events, parades, garbage cans, man hours, those types of things. State statute is pretty clear as to what a public purpose expenditure is, and if something is not the public purpose expenditure, the city cannot spend money on it. So wanted to just make everybody aware of what the criteria for a public purpose expenditure is. There's really three things that need to be met. The activity will benefit the community as a whole, the activity directly relates to functions of government, and then finally, the activity does not have, as its primary objective, the benefit of a private interest, so it's really not the same as number one. So with those things in mind, we have to determine what we feel meet those criteria in terms of community events or community festivals. We did include in your packet guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities as to how communities should be looking at those things, and I think if you look through that, it's pretty clear that the intention is that the statute is fairly restrictive. I don't believe statute contemplates expanding the definitions in any way so we can cover more and more events. So with that said, in the past years, this council has declared Summer Fest, the Over the River Fest in December, and then the Shop Moving Groove Festival in July as community festivals. Last year, of course, we had the 150th anniversary. It's very clear in statute that historical celebrations like that are permitted to be a public purpose expenditure. So what this council needs to do is discuss if they feel like these events still meet the criteria. Do we meet the criteria? If there's other events they want to include that would meet the criteria? And then we generally pass a resolution once a year. We certainly can consider events as they come up. The reason I think this conversation is more important now than ever is because the number of requests that we get on an annual basis continues to go up. We're getting a lot of requests or questions about waiving fees for small events or one-off events or events of certain clubs in the community. Of course, we say no to those things, but I think it's always good to publicly remind people why we don't have the legal authority or ability to support those things. Of course, a lot of us probably feel those are good things, you know, and support things like the Boy Scouts or whatever, but unfortunately, as a community here, as a city, we can't go down that road. So what I'm looking for from this council is just a discussion on what events they feel would meet this criteria, and then we'll get the city council, hopefully on Monday night, to pass a resolution. So as people organize those events, whether it be Summer Fest or Over the River, they know what the expectations are in terms of costs if we didn't raise funds. So again, I'll just say, the intent of the statute is to cover, you know, the community celebration. I always use Barnesville as an example in their Potato Day celebration. That's exactly what this statute is intended to cover. There's a lot of events, I think, that are a gray area, and, you know, if you rely on statute, we probably shouldn't cover those events, but that's a decision that the council has the ability to make and the authority to make, and we certainly haven't been challenged on anything that we've done thus far, but, you know, statute is what it is, and I guess somebody can make an issue of that. So I'll stop there and see if anybody has any strong feelings. Otherwise, getting a resolution to approve the events that we know qualify would be a good starting place, and then we have the ability to discuss any other rules.
All right, thanks, Andrew. So in the past, we've done Summer Fest, Over the River, and Shop Moving Groove, so those three is what the staff is bringing forward to continue for 2023 with the discussion from the council.
Yeah, those are the three we've done. We've heard some argument that, you know, the chamber sponsor event Shop Moving Groove may or may not meet the statute completely. I'm not going to make that decision. You know, I think it's a great event, like all the other ones that happen in town. I certainly think there's a very strong argument for Summer Fest and Over the River as our two community celebrations as a whole. So whatever the council wants to do with that, totally in your guise, if you allow us to make that decision.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Anthony, yeah, go ahead.
I would, obviously, with the, with all the roadworks that are going to take place on Lincoln, I think continuing with Shop Moving Groove would help kind of bolster downtown this year. I mean, I don't see, it's going to be tough enough for kind of, you know, motivating people to go downtown in the first place with the, with the construction, especially the fact that we're doing construction at the rear as well. So, I mean, at least sponsoring that event, I think, is justified because of what we're doing elsewhere.
Make a motion for those three?
Yeah, and make the motion for those three.
I would second that, your honor.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone have any real strong feelings now? If not, we could bring any other events on Monday night if anyone wants to, but for now, we'll include those three to a motion for the council on Monday night? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, we'll put that on the consent unless anyone wants to discuss further events, if that works for the councils. Thank you.
You can always pull it off if you'd say.
There you go. Next up, item number three is a trail equipment grant relating to cross-country ski equipment. We'll call on our city public works director, Guy Taylor. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning, thank you, your honor. We've got a great partnership going with the Nordic Ski Association, to the point where we've hired one of their members, Paul Mayer. He's our ace groomer this season. We received a donation from the club a couple of years ago to buy tracks for the Polaris Ranger that we purchased, and now they are actually funding part of Paul's salary this season as well. So they've been a great partnership to work with in making these trails possible, both at Kirkbright Park and at Roosevelt Park. The piece of equipment that we use is donated to, or on loan to us from the DNR, and it's a little bit inadequate, and so they are looking to apply for a grant through a DNR, Federal Recreation Trail Equipment Grant, in the amount of $21,850 to purchase two groomers. The groomers then would just be housed at Kirkbright Park and one at Roosevelt Park so that we wouldn't have to be transporting between the two parks. The association has agreed to cover the match of $5,462, so there would be no impact to the city budget other than maintaining the equipment throughout the years. So just a resolution to allow this grant to be submitted to the DNR.
Thanks, Guy, and I just want to say thanks to city staff and to the Nordic Ski Association for the partnership, because it is truly a partnership. If you look back over the last few years, as how that trail system got going up at the Kirkbright, I've received a number of comments about how much people enjoy that as an activity in the winter. In fact, I just got an email yesterday from someone from the Twin Cities who travels up here regularly, and just how much they enjoy that as an offering in the winter in our community. So I know it takes a lot of effort. I know the public works crew is out busy doing snow, so Nordic Ski taking the time to groom those trails. Thanks for the partnership on that. Yeah, Brent?
I just got a couple of questions. First of all, I'm in favor of this.
Let's have a motion first, and I will offer the motion.
Thanks, Jim. Second, Brent, thank you.
At Roosevelt, I know we got buildings over, what buildings do we got at Roosevelt to store those in?
They would be stored in a building.
They would?
They would just be stored up next to a building.
Up next to a building. And then also with the, this is something, I don't know, if you could answer, the gentleman back there could answer. We got the Aquatic Center going in Roosevelt, and we have the possibility of the school going in up at Kirkbright. How is that going to affect the trail systems in those?
Yeah, there likely would be some impact with both of those projects, but in Roosevelt, we can adjust the trail to that need or to adjust according to the building layout. At the Kirkbright, I'm not sure, the school has indicated that they would allow trails to be continued to use there at the park, so I'm not sure how that would look as far as the layout, but it sounds like it would be able to continue.
Okay, do we have any other spots around the building if they have to be able to go out and around, or?
They actually have thoughts on other locations, so more than just those two locations. So if it doesn't work out at Kirkbright, I guess there's thoughts of some other areas too.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks. Any other, Scott?
So the dollar amount being applied for is almost $22,000, and the grant is $5,400. So then the grant will cover the remaining $16,000. Is that?
Yes.
That's right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Guy? I have a motion to bring this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Guy, thank you, Paul. Item number four, we'll call on our chief to give us an update on fire department equipment grant. Good morning, chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The fire department would like to, once again, this year, we've been in front of you the last few years, or maybe five, four years, to put in a request, the assistance of firefighter grant for our confined, our self-containment apparatus, fill station and compressor. One that we have is nearing 24, 25 years old, and it's getting tired, and we were very fortunate in the fiscal year 2016 with the assistance by fire grant to get all of our SCPAs replaced, but when we did that, we also went to a higher pressure, which has proven problematic at times when we fill our bottles compared to what we used to have. So we continue to try to, you know, get that piece of equipment through a grant rather than paying for it outright from our capital budget. But also with this submittal, we, through some training and touring of some of our industry or industrial partners for our community and in a greater response area, is that we have some other equipment needs that have kind of been sitting in the wing, kind of, shall we say, and with this, we want to utilize or leverage the dollars within this program to add those pieces into this grant. So what had been historically a grant of about $50,000 ask does increase it to $134,000 ask for the total grant amount. Our share would be about $6,000 if we were successful with that award. So just looking for your guys' approval for us to move forward and submit the grant. Doesn't mean we get it, and they certainly would be in front of you if they were a recipient of it.
Thanks, chief, and we could recommend that to the council through a motion?
I'll make that motion, thank you.
Thank you. Like the second test? Thanks, Anthony. Anyone have any questions for Chief Muckell?
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah. Thanks for, you guys have had a busy winter, and thanks for the work, and.
You're welcome. It's a good team.
It's a good team. All right, all in favor of the motion to bring this to the council on Monday, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? That motion carries, and we can put that one on the consent agenda, I believe, unless anyone objects. All right, chief, you're up again for the Fire Relief Association Service Benefits.
Right, I will call on Luke. Give that annual report for you.
All right, thanks, chief. Good morning, Luke.
Morning. Mayor, council members, thanks for letting us come to the meeting to request, I think chief provided you a letter of our annual service pension amount increase from. Request is to go from 58.50, our current pension amount, to 5,900 per year of service. Looking at our numbers, it's the first time we knew our council members, the number that we typically look at is what we call our funded ratio, so we have our investment accounts through the state level of investment, and then our assets and liabilities for all of our retirements, potential pensions for our current firefighters and deferred members. And the number we like to target is around 115%. Historically, the investment accounts being fairly robust in the last several years, with this last year being a bit of a downturn. Our funded ratio still ended up at 124%, so we have a pretty solid cushion from what that means is we're 24% over being able to fully fund if everybody retired today to cover all the pensions within the account. So we feel it's a fairly good cushion that we currently have, and the request for this year would be an increase of $50 from the current 58.50 per year service number of 5,900. This falls within the established ranges by the state of what our max ratios came up like from a service pension amount per year, and still feel it's a conservative request to keep that funded ratio at the level that we want to have, so that's our request. If anybody has any questions?
Thanks, Luke. I'll offer that. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Brent. Any questions?
And I'll make a comment too, since how I was on that board, and they haven't done as well this year with their stocks and everything, but they're still up there to the point where they can increase that retirement.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Luke. All in favor of moving this to the council on Monday, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? That motion carries, and again, I think we can put that on the consent agenda unless anyone objects. Last item that I know of on the agenda is an update on our strategic planning efforts, and we'll call on community development manager Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, council members. I am excited to be here in front of you this morning, introducing what I believe to be the final draft of our strategic plan, and hoping for movement on this to move it forward as a document that we can use for the next three to five years. So I'm just going to go over the process a little bit, since we do have some new council members who have been involved with it. This is really the culmination of, I think, over a year of work. My timeline for the strategic framework actually goes back to October of 2021. October 18th, the city council and the port authority held a joint session, the process of which was meant to determine a common vision for development through the creation of an economic development policy or something similar to that. At the time that we held that meeting, the city had budgeted $75,000 to develop a comprehensive plan, which we do not have at the present, which was meant to run through the year of 2022. Any policy or plan that would be created before that time would be a complement then to that comprehensive plan. Prior to that October 18th joint session, a survey was sent out to members of the council, the port authority, business development for Fergus Falls, the board of Greater Fergus Falls, and city department heads, asking their opinion on the city's priorities. Nineteen responses were received to that survey, with the overarching theme of those responses being that the priorities were to see growth in the city of Fergus Falls. Respondents believed that economic development results in growth, but the types of growth that were discussed in the responses were varied. They hoped to see the population of Fergus Falls grow in the next 20 years and be a place for families to live, work, and play. Many respondents saw the same economic assets that were available to us in our city, had differing opinions on how they viewed the local manufacturing climate and effective business subsidies. So at the time, I asked how city staff could define growth or measure growth as we continue to work. So out of the survey respondents, what I did was categorize seven examples of growth. First example was an increase in the number of employees in our local businesses. Second was an increase in the number of businesses. Third was an increase in workforce living and working in Fergus Falls. Fourth was an increase in the number of new businesses formed, not relocations. Next was a reduction in number or percent of business closures. So an example of that would be increased business success and sustainability. Next was improved diversity in the economy, so more diversity in types of business and industries, full-time jobs with benefits, diversity also in business owners. And then finally, an increase in taxes collected, both sales income and property. So those are some of the definitions of growth that we pulled from the survey responses. So then during that session, council and port authority members were given fake money that they could spend on the different priorities, and we did a couple rounds of a game where they went through and they put money behind what priorities they thought were the most reasonable to define and measure growth. And at the end of it, what we were left with was an agreement that an increase in taxes collected would, which would be able to display what growth is, an increase in the number of businesses, and an increase in the number of employees in Fergus Falls. So the session then continued with a really good conversation about the strengths that our community has, and then some questions about what the identity of Fergus Falls really was. There was some good discussion about that. And the session ended with a desire for next steps to try to communicate better with the people of Fergus Falls to try to determine what our identity really is. So Mayor Ben, at that time, heard that desire for community engagement and began thinking of ways that he could engage the community and provide direction for council based on that engagement. So at that point, the idea for the strategic plan was really born. So back then, in December of that same year, at another joint session of the council and the port authority, is when we introduced the idea for the strategic plan. The process of the strategic plan would define roles for community partners and allow the organizations to leverage assets and local expertise. Four areas of focus were suggested by the mayor at the time, which we did end up moving forward with. Those, those areas of focus were land use, infrastructure, community and social development, and economic development. So at the time, council really liked the idea of the strategic plan and decided to move ahead with an RFQ process in order to find a consultant or consulting team who would come and help us to lead the planning process. So staff at that point was directed to put together requests for qualifications to find that consultant. The process itself, it would be hoped, would be steered by community and local stakeholders, despite the use of a consultant. They were really meant to rely on the community to do this work. And then the outcome of it would be a usable plan to identify short-term priorities and strategies in the area of land use, infrastructure, community and social development, and economic development. And then, like I said earlier, any plan that would come out of this would then later on probably tie in with the comprehensive plan, because we had still been hoping to eventually end up with one of those. The budget for the strategic plan was taken from the $75,000 that was set aside for the comprehensive plan. So in January of 2022, so just over a year ago, the city put out an RFQ. Several firms and several individuals responded to that RFQ, a committee that included the mayor, city administrator Andrew Brumseth, Anthony Hicks, Tom Ruffe, Natia Bowman of Greater Fergus Falls, me, and the former city planner at the time, Karen Flom, Karen Flom, scored each of the statements. I can't believe I said her name wrong. Interviewed, we did the scoring, then we ended up interviewing the respondents that scored the highest. And then at the end of March, WSB was the firm that had ended up with the highest score from all of those on the committee and whose interview we felt went the best. So they were chosen. In May then of 2022, WSB did their kickoff with council, and the four focused areas were again drilled down into during that session. So following that kickoff, that's when the community engagement part of it started. So committees for each of the four focused areas were put together. Participant names to be part of those small committees were solicited from council members, from city staff, and then also generated during a discussion between several members of the same small group who had done the interviews for the consultant process. So it was Anthony Hicks, Natia Bowman, myself, and Karen Flom. Invitations then to be part of those small groups went out to many, many individuals in the community. We did try to emphasize individuals who we knew had not been involved in city processes in the past, so names that we maybe didn't see pop up a lot of times in minutes from past meetings, things like that, and also individuals who have traditionally been critical of the city in the way that we have maybe done some of our work. So those committees began meeting in June, met again in October, and met again in November. After some poor responses to our invitations over the summer, maybe it was, you know, people prioritizing how they wanted to do things post-COVID, maybe it was just the hustle and bustle of summer, I'm not sure, but we ended up deciding to combine our small groups to try to maximize the number of people that we were getting involved. So infrastructure, the infrastructure small group began meeting with community and social development, and land use met with economic development. So these slightly larger format groups really helped increase our participation and fostered great communication and conversation. So alongside the small group committee work, there were also two in-person, community-wide opportunities for engagement. The first was in August at the pavilion downtown. It was held in conjunction with a Wait Till Eight Block party. So consultants came up, they opened up the pavilion, we had paper, paper surveys, different questions that were sent out on tables for people to respond to, and then like a short presentation with some question and answer time. And then in an effort to try to, instead of bring people to us, to meet people where they were, we also had city staff set up a table at a farmer's market, which is really well-attended. If you guys hadn't been to Fergus Falls Farmer Market, I highly suggest it, but we set up a table in early October and tried to grab some people that way as well, which ended up being a really fun event. Simultaneously to all of those outreach efforts, we also had online ways for people to participate. There was an online survey, there was also an online map that people could place pins on and add comments to. So we did have people involved that way. If they weren't able to make a meeting, they could always send their comments in electronically. So that left us then, after those months of engagement, with the distilled-down ideas that you see before you in the strategic framework. The framework or plan identifies themes gleaned through those months of engagement. Pages three through six present the themes that came from the community, and then those themes were distilled down into the priorities and strategies that you see on pages seven through 13 of the plan. So those categorize the priorities and then the accompanying strategies in each of those areas. And again, the areas are community and social development, infrastructure, economic development, and land use. So, let's see, did make some more slides here. Oh, this was WSB, so our team members from WSB, and I'm sure a lot of you met them, but Bart Fisher was really involved in the project, Kim Lindquist has also been super helpful. Kim has actually stuck around and continued to work with Fergus Falls. She's the one who's helping the port authority right now with their RFP for the dairy site, so she's really gotten to know the community and been a great asset to us. And then Kirsten Gray is a member of their team who helped with our outreach. So here are the priorities. I just pulled these from the plan. I didn't include the strategies, just some of the overarching priorities, in hopes that if you have comments or questions, that we can kind of focus on these a little bit. But community and social development, the priorities that were indicated by the plan were communications, which is why you see Jean with us now today, the overall community health and public safety in Fergus Falls, schools and childcare challenges. Infrastructure was, again, communications, that was a strong theme throughout all of our different focus areas, and the sharing of information, and then the creation of destination places, which would be a continuation of the work that we've started along the riverfront, but then also other significant areas in town. Economic development would be the, really, the development and sharing of information about tools available to the city, and then a focus on our downtown area. And land use, the main focus really came down to residential development, that we really need housing. So these are the priorities and strategies that we are going to ask you to be adopting at some point, probably on Monday, I think. So it's really important to note, though, that this plan should not be seen as static. So the idea of this whole process was to have a plan or a working document that would be fluid and would elicit ongoing discussion on the priorities, strategies, and projects that it is laying out at this point. So what the staff suggestion is going to be is that staff continues to meet on the strategic plan quarterly, and then with council, doing some sort of a work session or retreat at least annually to discuss our priorities and strategies for the next five years. So that is my presentation on our strategic plan.
I have a question for you, Clara. I'm sure there'll be lots of discussion as we go through this a little bit more, but thinking back to the beginning, like, under the economic development and the tools, I think the part of the discussion that led to this plan was looking at procedures for incentives and, you know, how we prioritize that. Did that come up, or did we get the framework for that, or where does that sit?
Yeah, that did come up as, as something that, at least specifically, council members and city staff really focused on. I think in our communications and conversations with members of the public, they were a little less familiar with what some of those tools might be, but definitely the takeaway from those discussions is that city staff and. But definitely the takeaway from those discussions is that city staff and council members still would like to see some sort of a plan be developed that lays out, or a policy that lays out what kinds of development we're interested in subsidizing and how you do that.
So the framework is there for this council to have that discussion?
Yes.
So, yeah, good, good. So a lot of information here to digest. Any, any thoughts on, do you want to discuss this now? Do you want to take some time, have a time to work through it?
Is there any way we can remove the word target? I mean, we try, and it says like, what type of business would you like? And once there's a target, can we change it to whatever is the generic store as opposed to, we had a target, we fought to keep target. Target chose to leave Fergus, not Fergus leave Target. So I think it's.
Big box redo?
Yeah, as sort of whatever they defined us. It isn't that we didn't try to keep them.
That's for sure.
So it was their decision, not ours.
So we'll take this up, is this like something we're going, the staff's going to ask for some formal recognition or adoption of this plan on Monday night? So we'll bring any questions as we go through this? I know I haven't had a chance to look through it at like.
I think it would also be worthy to, sort of, maybe on Monday night, recognize what we've already done on it?
Yeah.
I mean, because, you know, like, one of the things was DeLagoon, you know, and Soul and Communication. So I mean, I think it would be good to highlight, you know, what parts of the plan have already been enacted.
And then maybe back to that tools thing, like, I think it's really that discussion at the beginning in this council, like, you know, if we looked at tax increment financing, for example, of course, we can always, each project will have its own considerations, but to have some general guidelines from the council for staff as projects come into the pipeline, I think that'll, I think that'll, that would serve us well, having some general guidelines of what this council wants to see when it comes to incentives and development. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Clara, for your work on this. I know that getting the public engaged is always a, is always a challenge, but that was the goal at the outset, and I just want to commend you and your staff for doing that, because I know it's not easy, but there was public engagement on this document, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clara. All right, so that's all that's on our agenda that I know of. If there's anything else to come from the council, Lynn, do you have anything? All right, we're adjourned.